Motion to come out of executive session.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we authorize signature after legal review and modification on the contract per the discussion.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a signature.
Okay. I wasn't here for this one. You guys have reached over and talked about this, the ground after I, the landfill, so I'll call them up and then I'll mission let you kind of lead this. All right, let's go with Racine Olson. Hal and your crew.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just for your information, when this original discussion took place, I was in another meeting, so I'm gonna have Commissioner Huff go ahead and lead this discussion.
Okay, so would you guys introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, my name's Kate Peterson, I'm an attorney at Racine Olson, and we represent Clay S. One.
Elashiva Patterson at Racine Olson also.
Okay, and the issue at hand is Racine Olson and their client applied for a rezone, or they're asking for a rezone of the property around the landfill, and they're asking us to partner with them in that rezone application, is that correct?
Yes, we're seeking permission to include the parcels in our application for planning and zoning review. And to be clear, there are two applications, the first would be to amend the comprehensive plans, future land use map, and the rezoning application.
Okay, thank you. So, staff, do you have any further comments on this?
We do not, at this point.
Okay, Legal?
I have, I talked to both of them, Hal on the holiday, and I, the commission, of course, can decide if it's Bennett County property, if they want to join in a petition. Of course, you'd have to go through the same findings with the council, commission would have to make the same findings, and it's kind of an awkward position, then it would be subject to any potential judicial review to see where they're hanging their hat on. I know you have a concurrent application for the comp plan, I know one of the findings would be that it has to be in accordance with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And, per our discussion, right, I mean, there could be some discussion there whether it is or not. But, as far as the decision that's with the commission today, it's up for you to decide that if that's something that you want to start an application on, you can. Whether it's gonna go through, I don't know what's gonna happen with the council or with the commission or the findings or anything that happens in the future. I know there are some concerns that I had with how it sits today, but, and that's all I have for this meeting.
Kyle, would you come up here too?
Go ahead.
Would you mind if I?
Please.
So, today, I do want to make clear, this is not any finding on the merits of the application, this is just whether or not you want to allow county parcels to proceed along with the private parcels that are currently, you know, in applications before planning and zoning. So, in my mind, this is just authorization to allow fact finding to go forward. If at a later stage, the commission decides that the county parcels are not appropriate to be applicable for, you know, amendment under the future land use map or rezone, you know, you can always, and we can always remove those parcels. So, I just want to make that clear.
As a point of clarification, application was made representing their client. As we studied it through, we recognized that Bennett County needed to grant them permission in the application to have those parcels included. And so therefore, we're here today for them to clarify and receive permission.
The reason I ask Kyle up here is twofold, if you have any concerns about this at all, with the landfill. And second, that if we do go forward, I would like him to be the contact and involved, it's gonna go through your board, it's gonna come to our board. And so, to me, it's kinda, if Kyle acts in behalf of Bennett County in a way, so that the opportunity has the ability for it to, if it is appealed, that we can not be the main characters involved with it. What's your thoughts there?
So, if it's county property, the commission would have to approve, you know, the applications and starting the whole rezone process. Again, it's kind of an awkward process, because that's how it is, but, obviously, we would still be subject to the same affirmative findings and review and everything like that, you know, in accordance with the ordinance. But, I mean, you can always appoint one county to be, or like Kyle to be the head to, be the point person, but ultimately approval to move forward with them, like, especially initially would be with the board of county commissioners.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm kind of looking at is if we put Kyle kind of over it, then when they go to this board, or when they come to this board, that he would be the one, or when he, he would represent, rather than Right. a commissioner representing at that board meeting and then recuse himself from the next one.
Well, the board could certainly start saying, it's okay, let's start looking at this, you know, as a process, and then give it to Kyle to kind of go through with it, but we would need that initial approval from the board, Kyle wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
Chairman?
Point of clarification, make this very simple, Kate and Elashiva are here to ask for that permission. It sounds like that it is the commission's recommendation that a concurrent application, parallel, they would then need, council would need to be given to them to amend their application and removing Bennett County parcels, and have the county and Racine Olson representing their client run parallel for the respective parcels that are being involved. Does that make sense?
Which is just what happened with the parcels above income, with the three parties.
Yes, correct.
Similarity, that's what I was thinking of.
The process is basically that process, yes.
One of the owners come and represented the others, but...
Which means that they have an application, they amend it, they continue to move forward, it may require that we have greater conversation amongst this office, legal and commission, to clarify how this path would move forward relative to parcels owned by the county.
So, through the comprehensive plan, we would change it, and that would make it so that we're not spot zoning?
Correct.
I mean, that would be the biggest concern, is spot zoning, if we started ourselves, then how are we gonna tell somebody else no later, that wants to do kind of the same thing? I want to protect that, any comments about that?
Is that clear?
Yes.
That's my biggest fear with the joint application, is it appears to be a spot zoning thing, and I believe that sets a dangerous precedent going forward. So, I don't disagree with changing the zoning, I think that's appropriate, but I, personally, I would rather have us run a concurrent one, a separate one, so that, again, it's not a spot zone, so we address the comprehensive plan first, and then go from there, because I just worry about it being a spot zone in conjunction with you guys.
So, real quickly, let me issue a point of clarification, going back to my previous statement about the fact that we should have a greater conversation amongst the county, and specifically talking about that issue of spot zoning, and looking for legal clarification from county legal about the concepts and parameters of spot zoning.
Because I thought Legal told us today that this kind of meets the definition of a spot zone if we were to go forward like this, am I, did I misunderstand that, Brian, or? I think Braden reached us on that this morning, that it would, it would appear to meet that definition of a spot zone.
So, it's always hard to say, like, what would be or what would not be, as you're looking at it, like, spot zoning really comes down to if, if you have, if you're rezoning for a landowner or developer, and they're getting the benefit to the detriment of the community, right? And really, if that's not following along with the comprehensive plan, is kind of what they look at. So, as far as making a determination like that or not, we just want to make sure everything's ready to go, so. It's, we're just giving kind of like what a definition is, I think the question they're posing today is, would the county be okay joining, or not even joining, but also looking at maybe doing a rezone? But there are things that pop up as well with this request.
So, we, we do want to make clear, we believe that spot zoning is addressed by amending the future land use map first, Correct. and then doing the rezoning, and that multiple owners and parcels are involved, regardless of county joins on with our clients, addresses at least, you know, the case law concerns on spot zoning.
Usually, if it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan, that kind of takes that away.
So, Kate, Elashiva, am I correct in understanding your reasoning to be here today is to understand whether or not you should or you should not amend your application to our office based upon the county's position, correct?
Yes, that is correct, so we really need guidance from the commission, whether or not you want to authorize county parcels to proceed, you know, in union with our private parcels on the amendment and the rezone. If you do not want to give us that authorization, then that gives us guidance on amending our application to only go forward with the private parcels. But, as benefit to you, we think, you know, county would get to participate in the fact finding process underneath our application.
So, but the only properties we're talking about here are the landfill, underground just below the landfill. We're not talking about any adjacent properties, up or down Portniff Road, is it Portniff Road, what's that road now?
Port Hall.
Port Hall.
That's correct.
Let me ask you a question here, Hal, what is the benefit to the county of including our parcels in what they're doing?
I don't know that I have an answer, Commissioner. So, right now, we have a landfill function that is in an agricultural zone. In our ordinance, under land use, uses, we do not have a landfill use defined. So therefore, we don't know if it's allowed in residential, or if it's allowed in ag, or et cetera, is that correct? Tristan?
Yeah, just to clarify a little bit, so before the last meeting, I had done some research on some of the uses that are taking place at the landfill, and where they fit in our current use chart, and most of them would be light industrial or industrial uses. So, I would say, currently, the landfill is legal nonconforming, so it doesn't conform currently to the agricultural zone uses. However, because it has been zoned agriculture since the farthest back I went was, I think, 1958, it is considered legal nonconforming. So, the benefit then would be, we would be legal conforming instead of legal nonconforming.
That's if we made the change, but my question is, because we've been talking about so far up to this point, it's just participate in some fact finding, that seems to be what the benefit is, is we want to be involved in some fact finding portion of this, is that the benefit to the county? Because at that point, you said, we can divorce ourselves after the fact finding. Is it, and so what is the value of the benefit to be involved in this fact finding, or is there any great value at all?
I don't think there is, because if they submit their application anyway, then the fact finding goes and will be made aware of it regardless.
So, I'm not, I'm not seeing any benefit then, of the county in being, going forward in, with this particular application, so.
My only question in that is, so, we have a landfill in an agricultural zone right now. So, anyone in the county that wanted to open up a landfill could do it in any agricultural zone and follow our example.
That would be incorrect, because it, now that we have a new ordinance since 1998, it would have to be conforming to the current ordinance.
Okay, that's, I understand, that's answers a lot.
So, we can go forward, as a county, if we want to change the landfill from ag to industrial or whatever, we can go ahead and do that. And it sounds like, based on what I'm hearing here, that if they're gonna go forward with their, their plans, that we would certainly be able to see what their fact finding, fact finding was.
That is correct. Staff may shoot me when I get back to the office, and this may be premature to make this a statement. We are in the process of rewriting the ordinance, in the process of rewriting the ordinance, which we're anticipating for as early as January of '24. In the process of the rewrite of the ordinance, we will also amend the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map. In that process, we will be correcting all legal nonconforming uses to be legal conforming uses. So therefore, in the future, the landfill will be rezoned by the county through that task, just an FYI.
And so there's no urgency to participate in this, it doesn't sound like?
No.
Okay, well, it sounds to me like there's no reason to give them this authorization, just let them proceed with their private parcels, that's where I'm at.
Okay, motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we recommend Racine Olson proceed forward with their own individual suit, and excuse us, or reclusive us, or remove us, there we go, remove us from the existing application, how's that?
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, like, Charity?
Hello, Commissioners, Charity Stags with Southeast Idaho Council of Governments.
Wes Jones, Office of Emergency Management.
So, the, we are here to ask for an approval and signature of the final applications for the nine-mile fuels reduction phase two, and the big onion fuels, fuels reduction projects.
Questions, comments?
Let's get her done. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve grant applications as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just need a signature, but I've got them right.
Are these the same things? Probably.
Yeah.
Two signatures? Make sure you type. Thanks. All right, Hal, Chase? The other one after the other. First one's on a customer that passed away.
Yep, Chase Clark, building official. So, we have, I don't know, so we have an individual that has applied for a, a building permit, and we went through the process of a plan review, and during this time, unbeknownst to us, there was a passing away of a spouse. And they came upon a timeframe where we were kind of wondering where the permit was at, so we reached out to the applicant, they notified us of what had occurred. We had already completed the plan review process, and we had a fee associated with that. And, so it was our recommendation to them that they bring in front of the commission a possible waiver of that fee because of the circumstances in which we could not do ourselves. So that, that power would lie with the commission, and so that's why we're here today for that.
Chairman Moser, Hal Jensen, Planning Director, just, you know these people, I don't remember her name, she's a Whitworth, and her husband was a member of the fair board for some time. And I believe he's the one who has passed away, they own a piece of property on Moose Hollow. We went to great length to correct some deficiencies, they were going, he was going to actually do the improvements to Moose Hollow prior to starting. And this became apparent to our office, as Chase said, when we have particular applications that languish in the process, we reach out to find out if they're still intending to move forward. This one, we felt was an undue hardship, and so, as Chase stated, commission is the only one that can either waive or refund fees, and so we have this before you today. She, she does not desire to move forward with the construction of this home, and
Then I have it.
may even have the property for sale at this point.
I have a sticky note here, it says that no fees have been paid, not, no money's transpired at this time.
Correct, yeah, there hasn't been anything paid forward, so at this point, it would be more of a waiver of that, not a refund.
And $4,800 is what they owe at this time?
Correct. And so for us to close out the permit, we either have to have this taken, this issue taken care of, or have them pay and then close out the permit.
Well, what would be the recourse, so how do you, how do you, I mean, you put a lien against a property, is that?
Correct.
To do, to get money, I mean, that's...
As a comment, everything going forward would seem excessive in regards to trying to extract.
Where no money's transpired and stuff, I'm just forgiven, in my opinion, I mean, a death in the family, and they're not gonna build, and their whole world changed, and we haven't exchanged any money. I appreciate your people putting in the time and the effort, but we've already paid the wages.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve waiving fee as requested.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, Hal?
On my application, I put 10 minutes, may I exceed 10 minutes if I need to?
Everybody else has.
Welcome to the show.
Hal Jensen, Planning Director, Bennett County, I have with me Tristan Porclan, Assistant Director, and Chase Clark, Building Official. This is a long diatribe, so I apologize, when I was hired, I was asked to correct some deficiencies in a department. And then, for all intents and purposes, there were particular things that we did, and we were able to get the department moving forward in a direction that was, was a service-oriented department towards the customers that came and that we worked with, et cetera, and COVID hit, there's other things that we went to, we've had other issues that have arisen, we've had other items, and reconstruction of staff and job descriptions, et cetera, so this is the next phase. One of the things that I have found, shall we say deficient, in the understanding of the commission is how our office works. And something that most people have no comprehension about how an ordinance and a building code work together, yet also are two distinct, complete, separate documents. Let me share with you the fact that, in the past, the department was consisted of four people, typically the county engineer, the building official inspector, which was a dual role, administrative assistant, and a county planner. Nowhere in our ordinance does it say that the director has any power to overrule any decisions made by the building official, by those powers that are granted to him by his title through the building code, which is adopted by the legislative body, which is the commission, okay? The building official role is much more encompassing than just issuing building permits and making sure that there's life safety. In the event that, and one of the items that occurred years ago, was that the current building official at the time of the Charlotte Fire was woefully and inefficiently trained to understand that role. Let's say, for instance, this spring, since the ground is frozen, and we potentially have a warming trend and rain that may come with a fairly large snowpack, we will not have, and I'm using this as an example, I'm hoping this does not occur this spring, but we don't have enough warmth to pull frost out of the ground, so therefore, water is just going to sheet, and we're going to end up with potential flooding. Let's say we end up with, with issues where we have loss of property due to flooding. The state floodplain coordinator would come in with FEMA, and they would go to all of those respective structures and look at them, so that they could start creating a record. The person that has the sole responsibility for deeming the structure safe or at a loss, only person by his title is the building official, end of discussion. Not me, not a fire, not a Sheriff Manu, or any of his respective deputies have the ability or the power to render that opinion. The building official can have a list on file of structural engineers that can be quote unquote "for the situation," because they have respective knowledge and experience, they can be deputized to help him assess multiple structures, so that it can be done. Another person that's key in that is our emergency management coordinator, Wes Jones, okay? One of the things that no one recognizes is that anytime there's a fire that occurs in Bennett County, if it's under our jurisdiction, the only person that has the ability to render an opinion and declare loss of structure is the building official. If lava was under our jurisdiction, which they are not, but had they been at the collapse of the Blue Moon, the only person that has the opportunity and the right and the legal authority to declare that structure unsafe and condemned and a total loss is the building official. So, one of the items is that everybody has assumed that because there's a director, the director then has the ability to do these things, and that is completely incorrect. There is nothing in our ordinance that grants me that power, Tristan is the assistant director that power, only Chase. So therefore, I wanted to make you aware that all building permits are not issued under the planning director, building permits are issued under the building official, because it comes through the organization of the building code. Which prompted me then to go through and study the fact that my office completely separates the planning side and the building side. And so I gave you a hierarchy, because I promoted at length open conversation amongst staff. And so we have lots of different conversations about lots of different things, and sometimes duties become blurred. And from the legal aspect, I needed to make sure that my office understood the role that the building official has in our office, which is greater than most people felt. A lot of direction was coming from staff to the administrative assistant, which was then confusing other communications internally in the office. So therefore, I attached to you how I am anticipating to structure this office. Director, communication goes to three people, the assistant director, the administrative assistant, or the building official, okay? The assistant director then has the planning side, which goes to the county planner, to the assistant planner, Chase has one other person underneath him, which is the building inspector. I wanted you to be aware of the direction that that is going, and as we move forward, as we go into the budget year, how some of these things have implications, whether or not we should be consider, considering the potential of other exempt employees in the office, et cetera, because of their role and duty and their requirements. It also ties back to other meetings and conversations that I have had, and Chase has had with Commissioner Huff, relative to the establishment of one fire district, and working with the fire districts, helping them to understand the role and responsibility of the building official as they go and fight fires, the ambulance district, all of those emergency response aspects of what's available, whether it be a single individual, or whether it be a large area due to flood or fire, what the role of each person has in my office. I have also adopted Commissioner Tubby's comment from way back. The first time I came to him, and he looked at me, and he said, if you come to me with a problem, come prepared with a potential solution. And so I've adopted that. And so I've adopted that in this hierarchy of the office, letting them know that I understand each of you have problems and sometimes it's difficult to come up with a solution. But rather than come to me and expect me to help tell you what your solution is, oh, come to me with a solution and let's talk out the potential of what that solution is. And our office deals with problems and solutions day in and day out, just like every other office. It's constant. It never changes. Sometimes it's not just me that's in the process of helping someone or a member of the office figure a solution. Sometimes it becomes a collective mind think. Sometimes we can solve it within two minutes. Other times, it'll take us two or three days to figure out and flesh out all of the opportunities. This gives clarity of the planning side and the building side. And the only time they ever come together, literally, is when we issue a building permit. Any questions about where this is going or why this is done this way? This is structured based upon the ordinance and the code, which has never been done in this office in Bannock County before. And I don't say that to pat myself on the back. It's just, it's time that our county, moving forward with the growth that it's experiencing and other aspects of growth and development, the commission's clear on roles and responsibilities and things that really need to be paid attention to, whether it be working with Wes on a potential large problem or just one internally, that's a small problem, as I said before, with just an individual or a building permit.
No, I appreciate this and the lines of authority. Job descriptions, are they?
We, some of them are correct. Others need to be refined.
Okay, that's what I'd like to see too, is that correspond with the titles and stuff.
As a comment, Chairman, those are all being prepared for my first budget meeting on the 21st of March.
Thank you, thank you. And then, do you, do we need to clarify the authority that the director has?
There are items that will be clarified as we rewrite the ordinance. Okay?
The other deal that I would wonder, we don't have a county engineer, but we have a contractor. How does that fit in the flow here?
It's awkward to have that conversation here.
Okay.
I will share with you that, based upon what we've been able to do internally in the office, the county engineer was basically, in my opinion, a pretty expensive retainer for nothing more than signature. Because the tasks that are outlined were typically done by an engineer in training, not a licensed engineer. And then when it was finalized, then the signature was placed. As opposed to the county engineer actually doing the task. I think it works splendid the way that we have it structured now. With a consulting engineer on retainer, paid for the respective task. One is, is money savings and the other is efficiencies that we have found internally in the office. Now that said, that's not to say that the county doesn't have a need for an engineer, but internally in our office, or involved with our office, not necessarily so.
Okay, I just wondered. And then the only other thing is under the building official, you have commercial and then the building inspector residential.
As a general rule, that's.
Do they cross over?
They do, for the most part. My exposure to building departments is typically a building official is much more involved in the commercial end of things. Commercial inspections, commercial plan reviews, et cetera. A building inspector is typically, and especially in Bannock County, the building inspector almost exclusively does residential inspections because of the amount of residential work that's done.
And that'll be covered more in the job description than
Correct.
than right here, the way it looks. Okay. Other questions?
Do you just anticipate any change of, with the changing of the job descriptions in this, do you anticipate any change in salary structure or?
I do. A couple of items. I don't necessarily see any salary structure other than we have been going through the ordinance and especially with the tasks that are assigned now. One of the proposals will be to take the assistant planner and change that job description to a planner. And those two planners, one will have zoning ordinance side and the other planner will have subdivision and surveying side. Because they don't cross over. Those two aspects are very distinct task operations. So that assistant planner, when I come in with proposal on the 21st, there will be some other things that will be structured. That is the only position that is being redefined and studied right now. This hierarchy has been driving some of that other research on how this office is structured and why and job descriptions, and why the job descriptions need to be written. If you look at some of our old job descriptions, some of them are a page and a half long. If I was an applicant and I looked at everything that was required and realized that I only had about 25% of everything that was listed, I don't think I'd be applying because I would feel like there's no way I would ever qualify for the job. So we really need to, and I'm working with Ryan on that as well. I had a conversation at length with Ryan yesterday about clarity and conciseness of those job descriptions.
No, I appreciate it.
20 minutes.
Appreciate your office. Like I say, there's been a lot that has changed.
I brought, I brought these two because they now, for all intents and purposes, with the way this is structured, they are co-equal in the hierarchy and their duties and powers and tasks. And I couldn't ask for two finer people to be on either side of me moving the office forward. They do tremendous work.
And that's what I appreciate the most, actually, is you're looking at the future and how do we train and how do we get people that are going to step in at a later date to help us and keep us rolling.
So that's another item. I know that Commissioner Huff is very focused on leadership and leadership training. And Chase and Tristan are now, I can't remember the name of the training, Commissioner Huff, if you'll share with me. I'm drawing a blank.
NACO, High Performance Leadership.
Yes, they are now in, moving forward for enrollment in the April session.
Good, good. Anything else?
No, I, I've said enough.
Commissioners?
I'm good.
Thank you. Move forward. I might look forward to seeing your budget.
Okay.
Todd?
Good morning. Todd Margar with Bannock County Juvenile Justice. I'm here today to, it's that time of year where we submit our request for grant funding to the Idaho Office of Drug Policy for our Substance Abuse Block grant. Just a little background. The program, the Families in Action program is an evidence-based substance abuse education program that involves families, parents, and youth that have been deemed at risk. It's six sessions that are 2.5 hours per session. And we do six cohorts here in Bannock County at the YDC Center for now. In July, we'll be doing it at the New Assessment Center. Over the past years, the grant has provided funding for books and materials, the staff hours, and then on top of that, a 20% admin fee. This year, we have plenty of books. Over the last couple of years, we've ordered a few extra each year. And then with the COVID year, we have enough in stock to do the entire program with the books and the materials we have in stock. However, we are moving to a new building. The classes are taught through video. So in looking at our two training rooms that they'll be taught in, there currently aren't TVs there. So we are requesting, instead of materials, that we be allowed to purchase two TVs for those rooms, and that's built into the budget. So we will be, if approved, requesting, the total grant would be for $14,242.99. Over the past years, 2022, we requested $11,203.79 and 2022 was $10,459.63. In 2021, we served 104 individuals. That was 38 parents and 66 youth. We also served, in 2022, 53 parents and 86 youth for a total of 139 participants. We have not yet completed state fiscal year '23, but we're in the fourth cohort. So I'm seeking approval to submit a request for funds for 2024 Substance Abuse Block grant.
Gone through the process?
Yes, yes.
Looks like it.
And this is a recurring grant that we've had for.
Yeah, we've received funding since 2010, I believe. That was through Benchmark. The Idaho Office of Drug Policy took over the grant five or six years ago and we've been getting funding from them.
Top works during the summer.
Mr. Chair, I always like to make a motion to support Todd and his grant, so I make a motion that we authorize submission.
I have a motion. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, so we'll submit on before Wednesday next week and then we should know June 1st if we receive funding. And we'll schedule another meeting, hopefully for grant award signing at that point.
Great, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, Shanda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have asked for 10 minutes, but if I go in five minutes, do I get like a gold star or a cookie or something?
I'll probably just die of shock.
Well, in that effort then, I will move with the first request. Potential signatures on survey review roster contracts. These are the similar contracts that came before you last week. But last week, we had a conversation about the aggregate of liability, general liability. We had it at $3 million. After a discussion with Tristan in planning and zoning and our legal counsel with Brian, we felt that there would be no additional benefit to Bannock County. If we moved that to $2 million versus having it at three, it would also allow smaller companies to then bid for the survey review work. So the contracts that are before you today have an aggregate of $2 million proposed in there and they are signed by all three awardings that we would like to recommend to the commissioners. In conjunction with the signature of contract, we would recommend the board award those contracts. We are asking for three for the survey review. The first one I have to Adam Thayer with Diaptra. The second one is Stuart Ward with Diaptra. And then the third would be Matthew Baker with Summit Land Surveying. If you have any questions or concerns.
Questions?
Comments?
Hope we've been through this.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we authorize signature on the contracts as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, do we need another, because I have award letters also prepared if the board would sign? Do we need a separate motion?
No.
And those can just stay in your bag? The second item I have is just a procurement update. We are moving right through some rather large projects that we've got going on. The first one that I wanted to draw your attention to is that we have started the Forensic Pathology Center remodel project and defining that scope of work. We put together a team. We have our consultant, Dot E. Owens, on that group. And then internally, we have Dan Kendall, Hal Jensen, and Brayden Clayson on that review team as well. That initial draft for the architectural services has been sent to that team for review and I already have one comment back, so that is moving just right along. As we began that process, the delivery methods were also talked about, discussed on how best to move forward. The time to completion and the cost were weighed heavily when we debated on how to move forward with that. And we have decided to move forward with Dan Kendall heading that project and what is called multiple prime is how we'll move forward with that after we have the architectural drawings in hand. But we can talk more about that as that rolls forward. We're just working for the architectural services at this point. The shoot barn for the fairgrounds in Downey has been posted and we have a couple document takers already, so that is moving forward well. And then the detention center roof, the contract that we've been working on, we do anticipate that coming before the board next week for review and signature as well. If there's any other questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Three minutes, look at that.
Good job. All right. We've finally hit our 10:30. Like to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session under Idaho Code. Let me get there. 74-206-1F to communicate with legal.